Good evening, it's now 6:00 PM. This is Tuesday, March 4th, 2014, and this is a work session of the Garland Independent School District Board of Trustees. A quorum is present, and notice of this meeting was posted as required by law. A quote from writer of fantasy and science fiction, author of Dreams of the Compass Rose, Lords of Rainbow, Cobweb Bride, and the Cobweb Empire, Ms. Vera Nazarian. Whenever you read a good book, somewhere in the world, a door opens to allow in more Did you know that there is magic taking place in the Parsons pre-K library? There are two trends in this country. The first one is to look at either third or fourth grade reading scores for students. If the child is reading at grade level when they get to third or fourth grade, the chances of success are greatly improved, because it's that point when reading of material becomes very, very important. The second trend is the use of pre-Ks. Now, some people say, "Well, this is a democratic innovation coming from President Obama." Except, the state that is the most successful in implementing pre-K education is one of the reddest states out there, our border, Oklahoma. So, this is really not a red or blue state type of institution. It's what's been proven on success of students. We in this district have two separate standalone pre-Ks, Parsons and Cisneros, and we have pre-Ks at 20 additional elementary schools. So I had the opportunity to host a tour of educators from around the state at Parsons. And when we came to the library, we met librarian Beverly Combs. Now, Ms. Combs is a very, very special librarian. She started in middle school as a librarian, and then decided, "I'd like to work at a pre-K." To get ready for this job, she read about 1,000 books to say, "What will be appropriate for a pre-K and what won't?" She also is an in-demand speaker at all of our state conventions. So when the group got to the library, there was silence as she started telling us some of her innovations. The first one she said is, "I allow the children," four-year-olds, "to check out books." She said, "When I came up with this idea, everyone in the district said, 'You're crazy. You're going to allow these little kids to check out a book and take it home?'" She says, "Yes, I trust them." The first year, about 2,000 books were checked out, only three were not returned. Better than any public library I've ever heard. I'm trying to think how many fines I've paid for overdue books. The next year, only two were not returned. She also has another program where you have, the child takes home to the parents, a list, and every day that either the child reads to the parent, or the parent reads to the child, they get a check mark. When that sheet is filled, you get a book to take home to keep, to establish what she says, "Your own home library," your own library at home. Over 600 books this year have already been given out to the children to start their own libraries. This is one of the most successful programs in the country, right here at our own pre-K. The educators could not believe what they were hearing. They kept taking more and more notes, and as we left the library to go down the rest of the hallways, they saying, "I want to do this, I want to do this, I want to do this." How do they accomplish all this? Well, we do accomplish it. So again, thank you to Ms. Beverly Combs, thank you to the principal, Dr. Bonnie Barrett. Again, magic is taking place at that campus and that library. Please join me for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We'll go to item three, information items. Receive information on IB primary and middle years programs, Dr. Davis.
Good evening, Mr. Glick, Dr. Morrison, and members of the Board of Trustees. I appreciate this opportunity to come before you this evening. We would like to present to you some information regarding the primary and middle years international baccalaureate programs. The academy planning team consists of quite a few people. I'd like to introduce them at this time, and also let you know that they will be following me to come up and share information with you, or part of this team will, on what we have found in our research and visits regarding the IB programs. They are Janet McDade, Area One Director. Would you stand when I call your name? Thank you. Dr. Kristin Edney, Advanced Academics. Cheryl Beard, Gifted and Talented Coordinator. Bree Smith, Facilitator. Alex Rivera, Principal at Walnut Glen. Taysha Nelson, Principal at Kimberlin. Cheryl Alexander, Principal at Hillside. Holly France, Principal at Austin Academy. Atticus Wisner, Principal at Garland High School. And Elizabeth Sutton is the IB Coordinator at Garland High School. Thank you. I want to give you just a little bit of background, if you will, regarding our academy planning timeline. What we did was we began to explore the IB's primary and middle years last year, about a year ago this time. As a result of our academy planning, one of our goals was to provide a support system to ensure vertical alignment in our three elementary academies, Austin Academy and Garland High School. The IB primary years and middle years program exploration is a result of our thought process to begin with the end in mind. What do we want a student to look like when they graduate from Garland High School? And so, what happened with that was we said, "Well, obviously, that college and career readiness is at the forefront of what we want this to be, what we want that student to look like." And the IB diploma program is already in place at Garland High School. So how do we ensure that students are prepared for this rigorous program of study? So last summer, we began researching the primary and middle years programs, and included a visit to Carrollton Farmer's Branch, where they had all three of these programs in place this past fall. So that's just a little bit of a timeline on how this even came to be. And the mission of IB is to, is that it aims to develop inquiring, knowledgeable, and caring young people who help to create a better and more peaceful world through intercultural understanding and respect. And now Ms. Sutton will come and do the next few slides.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. I am thrilled to be here. I'm thrilled to be at Garland ISD, working with this program. And I'm here to talk about the continuum of the program, the PYP, NYPDP, and the IBCC. My impressions of this program, and this is my first year here at Garland, and it's also my first year with the IB, but I have been 14 years in education. And what I see in the development and cultivation of students with regard to the curriculum is nothing less than fantastic. They leave very self-reliant, very independent, very interested in the world and in ethical behavior, ready to join tables of conversations where they can take part and contribute meaningfully from their talents. And they do this because they are in fact taught that critical thought. They are in fact taught how to question material. And so I want to show you these curriculums. The PYP, and you'll notice everything is a circle, and it's bounded on the outside with the international mindedness. Everything in the world is connected, and it's connected because we are a community that is a worldwide community, and quickly becoming even more so. And we want to impart to our students that this international mindset is very important to the promotion of one's community, as it's to the promotion of the world and the world's interests. So it begins with the PYP, and the international mindedness is the outer band, but as you move towards the center, you'll see the disciplines, and then in the absolute center, you'll find the core curriculum. And that core curriculum is in place to develop the independent projects and the independent mindsets, as well as cultivate ethical behavior. The primary years program culminates with the exposition, which is a school-selected community service project, that is, if you will, monitored by the teachers of the school. A class will select something to participate in, and they will put together this exposition and then demonstrate it for the community. And the idea of this independent selection of a project continues all the way through the DP. And in the DP, it's an extended essay, which is very similar to a master's thesis. The students independently select a mentor and a topic, and pursue it to the writing of a 4,000-word research essay. And they present it to their peers, to their teachers, in whatever venue that the school permits them to present it. But the programs promote, and my clicker is not working, there we go, international mindedness, including multilingualism. The schools that we visited taught kindergarten classes in Spanish, as well as in English. So depending on the student, they could attend a Spanish-speaking kindergarten class, or they could attend an English-speaking kindergarten class. It cultivates active, student-centered learning, and that's that critical thinking component that I was mentioning. And authentic, criterion-related assessment. The assessments are really, really fun. The DP program that I'm involved with right now is in the process of sending our assessments to be graded, because in the IB, we have assessments conducted by members of the world community. And so not only do our teachers look at the material, but we have outside checks on our grading systems. The IB papers, for example, that I have just submitted this week, and this past week, have gone to Spain, Kuala Lumpur, Singapore, Canada, British Columbia, and South America. This is a challenge. It's fun for the students to know that their work is being viewed by individuals outside of Garland, outside in fact from the United States. And to have the confidence to submit your work to individuals from different cultures creates a self-esteem, an independent individual that is prepared to go on to a university. And in fact, your packets, do you have acceptance rates of IB students compared to non-IB students? So why IB? I'll speak briefly, because I did talk about this on the earlier slide, but the complexity of the program creates a complex, ready individual. And we want to advocate for that for our students. It's an international qualification. In fact, many of the universities in Canada want to know students what are called predicted grades. So when they make application, the teachers have to predict what their scores will be on the IB assessments for admission. The critical thinking is a very, very strong component of the IB, and the critical thinking is cultivated by the way instruction occurs. Students are presented with something new, and then they're asked, "Now, what would you do with this?" And they have to find a way to teach themselves about the thing that they have been presented with, or idea. So subjects are not taught in isolation. We have just concluded something that is called the Group Four Project in the DP program. The Group Four Project, the Group Four in fact are the sciences. The Group Four Project is a combination of the sciences. We have chemistry, physics, environmental systems, and biology. And the students gather in groups of four. Someone is very strong in biology, someone may be very strong in chemistry, and they work together to answer a question. For example, energy usage. And so they use design, the environmental systems, and the computer science to develop programs, or computer programs, or models, which is very similar to what is done in professional organizations. And then, as a combined unit, they study this particular item from the perspective of that discipline, and then they present it to the community. So it's a very adult project, and it's very, it is time-intensive, it is work-intensive, but it is similar in nature to something that a student or a professional in the sciences will encounter. So as a result, IB helps students. It helps them grow, it helps them not only gain admission into college, but it helps them be ready to address the world. They are centered, independent, complex, and ethical. They are also, they also are aware of their own boundaries and their own limitations. For example, one cannot do everything. And they learn through their experiences with the workload of the program, how to balance life. And I am now, the IB programs, okay. So we have the primary years program focuses on the development of the whole child in the classroom and the world outside. We have the middle years program, which is a framework, again like the primary years program, focusing on critical thinking and embracing an international mindedness and a, looking at the way subjects are interconnected, as well as exploring ethical considerations about the world and how one might interact with one's community, and then culminating with the diploma program. And next, I have Ms. Taysha Nelson, who is president, or principal, not president, of Kimberlin Elementary. Ready?
Good evening, distinguished board members and Dr. Morrison. As one of the elementary academy principals, I'm here to briefly talk about the primary years program. The primary years program curriculum is designed for students ages three to 12 years old, which focuses on our elementary campuses. It's also focused on the development of the whole child, and the themes of global significance are derived from the six subject areas, six subject areas being math, language, social studies, art, science, physical, social, and personal education. The aim of the primary years program is to create a transdisciplinary curriculum that is engaging, relevant, challenging, and significant for all of our learners.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Dr. Morrison. I'm going to go over the IB learner profile that you see on your screen at this point. The IB learner profile outlines critical attributes that are desired in the PYP IB student. As you can see from your screen, there are 10 attributes, some of those being that the student be knowledgeable, that they be a risk taker, that they be balanced, that they be involved in critical thinking, that they be inquirers, and reflective and caring. Each of these components plays a pivotal role in students' learning from a global and self-reflective perspective. Guiding students instructional paths so that these attributes are realized is one of the major goals of IB. And now, Holly France, Principal at Austin Academy, to talk about the middle years program.
Good evening, Dr. Morrison and Board of Trustees. As we enter in examining the NYPD, the NYPD or middle years program is designed for students between the ages of 11 and 16. NYPD students progress through an academically challenging framework as they understand and form connections between the content and real-world context. It is through NYPD that students extend and build upon critical and reflective thinking skills as they are active participants in interdisciplinary learning. The NYPD wheel or circle displays the integration of these eight subjects along with the areas of interaction. Utilizing these areas of interaction, teachers may organize their curriculum through a common language inclusive of approaches to learning, community and service, health and social education, environments, and human ingenuity. It is through this integration that our NYPD students will become global thinkers and continue to make connections between their subjects and global contexts and issues. Within the final year of NYPD, students are assigned a teacher-mentored project to develop a personal project reflective of the student's ability to independently work utilizing the areas of interaction. As our NYPD students meet the district curricular requirements, NYPD builds upon the attitudes instilled at the PYP level and prepares our students to meet the academic challenges of the IB diploma program. Which will take us to our next slide presented by Atticus Wisner, Principal of Garland High School.
Good evening, Mr. Glick, members of the Board, Dr. Morrison. Hope everyone's doing well tonight. My name is Atticus Wisner, Principal of Garland High School, and I'd like to present you with a very brief synopsis of the IB diploma program at Garland High School. My first slide is yet another circle. It points to the most important parts of the diploma program. The first three things that are listed under the program core include some of the above and beyond expectations associated with the program. Ms. Sutton spoke to these a minute ago. The extended essay is kind of like a mini master's thesis. It's about a 4,000-word essay that the student does. It requires about 40 hours of research. It's meant as a point of academic and personal reflection for the student. The theory of knowledge class is kind of like the academic, intellectual, philosophical culmination of the program that occurs in their senior year. The overarching question during the theory of knowledge curriculum, that the theory of knowledge curriculum poses is, "How do I know what I know?" So it's these sorts of epistemological and philosophical considerations that students talk about and explore in a very explicit way in this class, and it positions them very well for college as independent and critical thinkers. The creativity action service or CAS project is probably best described as kind of like an Eagle Scout project. It requires about 150 hours of work over the junior and senior years, and it aims to make the world a better place through localized community action and reflection. The subject groups under that second portion there, that represents the core areas of concentration for IB. Unlike the four core areas we often think of under the traditional Texas graduation requirements, IB requires a core study in six academic areas. Moving on to the next slide. There's four parts of the program that kind of we're responsible for, and the IB program is responsible for. The curriculum is an online curriculum. If you look at it, you'll notice lots of blogs, lots of dialogue between teachers throughout the country and throughout the world, trading ideas and things like that. The student assessment piece, like Ms. Sutton spoke about earlier, is a really neat piece because things are assessed locally by teachers, but they're also assessed by people all over the country and all over the globe. And it does build kids' confidence to get some of these things back and see how they're evaluated from across the earth. The professional development piece, excellent professional development is associated with this program. It really mirrors the essence of the program. There's trainings throughout the country and throughout the world. School evaluation, IB comes into our school about every five years. They do a curriculum audit, they interview kids, they interview teachers and administrators, they make surprise visits, and give us information as to how we can improve the program. The final slide I'm going to talk about is the math, the number of diploma programs currently in the world. You'll notice it's spread throughout the entire, throughout the entire world, and it speaks to the scope of the program. It's very much the quintessential preparation for global mindedness and for university studies. Perhaps the most compelling thing, and we mentioned this earlier, Ms. Sutton did, that you've got in front of you, Board, is the college acceptance rates. We pulled that off the IBO website just recently. I don't know if that represents last year or the year before, but it's the most recent stuff that IB has given us. And if you look at that, and you look at schools like Baylor University, Texas Tech, University of Texas at Dallas, and they recruit our kids very hard, those kids virtually are not denied entry into those schools. They have 100% acceptance rate. And other schools like the University of Texas, Texas A&amp;M, other state schools like the University of Michigan, accept kids at about a 20% higher click than the regular population of applyers. And even the most competitive schools in the country, like Harvard and Stanford and the, you know, the military academies, accept the kids at a higher rate. And this is, this is because of the kind of learner that IB develops. So it's an exceptional program. It's paid for itself 1,000 times over, I really believe that. It's a very special course of study that people like Ms. Sutton, Ms. France, Dr. Davis, and the teachers at Garland High work very hard at in terms of maintaining its quality. So I want to thank you and thank them for continuing to support it. And now, Mr. Alex Rivera, Principal at Walnut Glen.
Mr. Glick, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Dr. Morrison, thank you for your time. I have a very quick sum-up, so to speak, from what my colleagues have already expressed. I'm going to go over the IB expansion. As you can see on the first slide, that it encompasses in the primary years Kimberlin, Hillside, and Walnut Glen Academy. The middle year is going to change a little bit, where Austin Academy, the middle years program will now not only have Austin Academy, but also the ninth and 10th grade at Garland High School, which basically would envelop the pre-IB that is there right now. The next slide is also pretty brief. It just explains the timeline for implementation. We're looking at four years, the first year being the consideration phase, second being the request for candidacy, request for authorization, and finally, decision for authorization from the IB program. My last slide is very simple as well. It basically just shows the previous slide in a flow chart, more of a visual representation. It's pretty self-explanatory. Thank you so much for your time. I'd like to bring back Dr. Davis.
The last slide that we'll speak of this evening before we entertain questions is in regard to the IB expansion budget, and this is, encapsulates what would go on if this were to be implemented at our three elementary academies, and Austin Academy, and also into the ninth and 10th grade years at Garland High School. There are dues, and you'll notice there's a difference in each year. I'll be glad to answer questions, but I'll try to briefly explain. We, IB recommends that you do a trial teacher training and implementation as part of the implementation process before they will allow you to go school-wide with anything. And so that first year would encompass trial teacher training, and that would be a one-time cost, and would encompass only a select few teachers from each of the campuses. The administrator training for year one is about the principals at those schools, and then in year two, you would add the assistant principals of those campuses. The teacher training would not occur for the rest of the campus until year two. That number is so large because it would include all teachers at all five of those campuses in the first year. After that, it would rotate, we would not do anything till year four. The IB, the IB program changes its curricular framework every five years. And so we would send teachers each year, but it would be different teachers. And so the cost would become what it is in year four for teacher training would be each that year and each year thereafter, because we wouldn't have to send everyone again ever. The curriculum materials, and IB also requires, on the last line, a coordinator for each of its programs. We have a coordinator for the diploma program. This would also require us to have a coordinator for the primary years program and a coordinator for the middle years program. And then those are the totals at the bottom. That's our presentation, and do you have any questions of me? And I'm also going to ask Ms. Sutton if you have something more about the research that she can answer those as well.
Mr. Ax, would you like to start the questioning?
I miss that. Thank you. That was an excellent presentation. A few questions. Some of our best students in the past in the IB program were students who came from schools other than the academies. Will there still be the option for self-nomination, parent nomination, and teacher nomination?
Absolutely. There would not be anything to deter that process.
Okay. And will the, the middle years program basically incorporate the pre-IB classes that were previously taught at Garland High School?
Yes, they would remain the same. It's just that it would be, it would offer more professional development for those teachers, and they could be a part of the IB program, whereas now it's pre-IB. Does that help?
Yes. I just wanted to comment- I just wanted to comment that my daughter is an IB graduate of Garland High School, and her husband, they met at Austin College, and he told her that he felt she got a better education at Garland High School than he got at Austin College. And one of our kids at Garland High, while I had the privilege of teaching there, ranked seventh in the world with, at the end of her graduation. So I'm, I'm obviously a, a very pro-IB person.
Thank you.
Dr. Castaneda.
Thank you, and thanks to all the principals too, who helped in this presentation. I also have a couple of questions. One is, what would this mean for the current curricular offerings that we have? Would there be any additional courses that would need to be added? And in particular, I'm wondering, how does that personal project fit in for the middle years program, since the middle years program is going to span, I take it, grade seven, eight, nine, and 10? And so where does that supervision for that individual project fall within, within the curriculum?
I'm going to answer the curriculum question and then let her address your other question, if that's okay.
Sure.
As far as what's required by the state of Texas, the TEACs, the college and career readiness standards, those of course would, would stay in place as they are, as the IB program is more of a framework for how we teach, but it doesn't add extra things on. It's just about the projects and, and the things. And I'll let Ms. Sutton speak to your other question, because it doesn't change the curriculum, but it provides support in other ways for academic rigor for the curriculum.
So in terms of when is that project presented in the middle years program? It's the culminating piece, and it occurs in sophomore year or the 10th grade year. The, the way the diploma program works, and I'm, I'm using it as a comparison.
Okay.
Because I'm very closely involved with that. But we have eight periods at Garland High School. We have four one day and four another day. It's a 90-minute block period. The IB kids take six subjects, which leaves two periods for them to engage in electives or something they're interested in, as well as to engage in the TOK class, the theory of knowledge class, and CAS, and work with their extended essay. So having the two periods there as part of a block schedule is, is very important. I would imagine that in an NYPD program, that the block schedule would be important because a period could be used. I have an EE coordinator. I imagine there would be a coordinator to help out with the students' presentations, that they would have a period to meet with that individual, to seek out mentors, and to work, to engage in the research, to engage in the presentation, and the practice of presentation during those periods that are free.
So are they, are they free, or do the students sign up for CAS as a class, for example?
CAS right now is, well, Mr. Wisner and I had discussed this earlier this year. We had thought about incorporating a CAS period on the ends of the TOK class. The TOK class currently runs from the last semester of the junior year through the first semester of the senior year, so it touches both years.
Okay.
And it enables the students to discuss those ways of knowing, which is part of the curriculum, ways of knowing, it's the, another circle, on how does one learn things in the world? And that period is reserved for them for that purpose. I would imagine that in an NYPD program, Garland, as having experience with the DP, would likewise engage with a block schedule with an NYPD, with there being a class of some sort that would extend through the sophomore year, maybe begin in the ninth grade year, and culminate in the 10th grade year with the exposition.
Okay, so I'm still a little confused, because on the one hand, I heard that we would not need to add classes, but on the other hand, I think I'm hearing that you're considering CAS as a class.
I am comparing it to the DP program.
Okay.
The NYPD would, of course, have its own ways of implementation. That's one way that we do it for the DP. It's not necessarily a, you have to have a class there. The students might be able to seek out a mentor, which they do with the EE. They seek out a mentor, and they write and produce that research on their own, on their own time. So that might be another avenue. So if the question is, do we have to have another class, the answer is, is neither no nor yes. One can do it in a variety of ways, I would imagine. And in my experience in the DP program, we have the extension. We use the block schedule to incorporate that as a class, only for the students to have more time to work, because it is a time-consuming activity.
Okay, great. I think I have greater clarity on that. For current, what's the current model presently, and I'm sure Trusty Axe would know this too, since he comes from this teaching background? For teachers to teach in the IB program, is it required that they first attend some kind of training or professional development in order then to teach a class that's IB this or IB that?
Yes, ma'am. In the diploma program, they have a series of core objectives that include the international mindedness, as well as the technology component, and the material, the assignments themselves are the things that are sent out. So we send out, to be assessed by IB graders, things that are called written assignments and internal assessments, as well as the exams themselves. Now, those are not the only assignments that the Garland teachers give, because we also have assignments that support the grade book. We have, we have a solid base of grades to offer the students. But the teachers would have to go to a professional development to learn the curriculum, to learn the objectives, and to incorporate them. Additionally, there is a lot of work on the teacher's part. They have to construct relevant curriculum that is relevant to their district, and at the same time, global and inclusive of world topics.
Okay, thank you. And then I think the other questions might be for, I'm not sure, but I'll ask the next one, you can, whomever is going to field it. So Atticus indicated that there are periodic audits, and I was wondering when your last audit was?
It was 2011, I believe.
Okay. So you're kind of in mid-cycle and probably expecting one in the next couple, two years?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Are you ready?
Yes. I got off easy, I thought, is that it?
No, I'm not done yet. Are you kidding? I'm just warming up.
Okay, great. Where did Ms. Sutton go?
You know, for, I was wondering also, the structure, and this might be for some of the others, if the structure for the primary year programs and the middle years program, is there also external evaluation or assessment of any of the works of the student, or is it mostly a curricular structure and approach to curriculum?
I would imagine that there are some external assessments, but I would defer to Ms. Sutton on that or one of the other people. I don't, I don't know for sure. I can't speak to the middle years and the primary years program with a lot of, a lot of authority.
We do have to submit digital images of the kids' projects. I know that for certainty. Whether the, the disciplines within the NYPD and the PYP have such things as internal assessments and exams, I am, I'm, I don't know. I would imagine that there are, because that is a very large component of the student development in the DP program. Again, to cultivate that independent self-esteem, submitting your work to someone you don't know somewhere in the world is, is part of that growth. And so I would imagine that, yes.
Okay. Well, if you could get a for-sure answer and get it back to us at some point, that would be great.
Absolutely.
And then this one's for the principals, and I promise it'll be my last question. So I was wondering if, have we had conversations at the, at the middle school, for the middle school and primary? Have you had conversations with the faculty and staff at your campus about the potential of bringing this approach to the GT teaching? And what have those conversations been like?
Okay. I can say, we're at Kimberlin, when we started this academy, this vertical committee, we had committees on our own campus where we picked some of our teacher leaders to discuss the topics with. For the most part, my teachers were very excited about it. Several of them had had kids who graduated from the IB program, and they spoke highly of the program, so. And I have several teachers who graduated from the IB program, so. And one specifically graduated from Baylor, and she said that she felt like her IB experience was more difficult than the Baylor program itself.
Speaking on behalf of the staff members and teachers at Austin Academy, all of the conversations we've had have been very, they're very excited about the idea of transitioning to NYPD. They know that we can push our kids and give them those opportunities and better prepare them for the IB program. And so the goal of everything we're doing is to take care of our kids. And so it's our teachers' opinion and our campus' opinion that the best way we can take care of our students and best prepare them for the IB program and facilitate the utmost success is for us to transition to NYPD. So the notion of NYPD and the training and the investment is well-supported by Austin Academy staff.
At Walnut Glen Academy, we've talked about the IB program sort of in brief. We've been trying to focus on a lot of other things this year, but any time that we have discussed the IB program in the primary years, I've gotten the same excitement as far as some of the other principals, where they have students who've already attended or are attending or are thinking of attending, or other friends and family members who've had experiences at Garland High School. So I'm really looking forward to going back and really having a much more in-depth discussion with my staff about the IB program.
Just to piggyback on what Dr., Mr. Rivera said, at Hillside, we have not had in-depth conversations about PYP. We've spent a lot of time this year talking about rigor and working on rigor and some of the precursors that you would naturally see that would evolve themselves into an NYPD and then the diploma program. But I too have staff members and parents who have sent children through the IB program, and there's a lot of pride and excitement when it comes to that. So one of the things I wanted to just wait on was after this information has been presented to you, the board and superintendent, then to go back and start some critical conversations with my staff. But overall, I do believe that the feeling is going to be one of positivity, and let's get in there and do it, and so I'm very excited about it as well.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Ms. Griffin.
Yes, thanks to each of you for being present and for your presentation. With this approach, tell me what's different in terms of how we start with gifted and talented right now in our selection process, starting in our primary years? What would be different?
As far as the selection is, there would be no difference, because we select our gifted and talented students based on the requirements as set forth by the state of Texas. And we have some parameters that we must follow, and that selection process for those students would not change.
Would this approach increase the number and the demographics of students that are currently enrolled across primary, middle, and secondary years?
Increase the enrollment in each of the campuses?
Each of the campuses, the entire program?
Well, as far as the students who go to these schools, I mean, we're, we're still a choice of school district, and so we would still have to follow the parameters of that. The students would not be selected any differently to go to the campuses than they already are.
Okay. I look at the timeline, and what I have is year one, year two, year three, year four, with cost. I have no year that is defined for year one. So I'm assuming you all have been working, and your assumption is that year one is when?
If the board were to approve this, we would implement it next year, if that would be the desire of the board.
And when I look at the expansion budget.
Yes, ma'am.
And the amount of training that's required in year one, kind of tell me what would take place there, since that's the, I guess, more or less, the pilot year?
Yes, ma'am. What, what IB recommends that you do is you select a teacher from each of the core areas for a campus that you're going to implement IB on. So in this case, it would be four core teachers from each of the primary academies, each of, one from, four from Austin Academy, and then four from the ninth and 10th grade years at Garland High School. And that would encompass the pilot program at each of the campuses.
So in that pilot year.
Mm-hmm.
They are taking on the IB expansion, and they are still doing their normal teaching and course duty?
Yes, ma'am.
And how do we know after year one, with the trial and the pilot, that it has been successful, and that we are ready to move forward to year two?
That would be a determination made by the IB committee that we work with that comes, it's an outside source that would come to us and would explore what is going on in our campuses. They would have to see that we are implementing the IB program at each of those campuses, and each of them would be treated separately to make sure that what we are implementing is in line with their guidelines and their procedures.
So we wouldn't have to necessarily go all or none. Could it be a phased approach?
It could be.
And how would we determine that? Would it be the principals or the teachers on the campuses?
I think that they would need to have a say in that. We would need to look at that in a different perspective than what we have currently looked at it. We have not gone that route, as we wanted to be all-inclusive and give everyone the same opportunity at our academies, but that is something that, if needed be, we could look at.
My concern is year one seems like it would be, we could possibly accomplish that. Year two, when we would say for all the teacher training, and we would go and train all of the teachers, I'm concerned about successful implementation and monitoring and indicators that would let us know either we need to redo something or whatever, or do we just do everything all at once and just keep going?
No, ma'am. That's a, that's a great point. Notice that it is a four-year process. These campuses would not be named as IB campuses until the end of that time. So it is a process, a lot of professional development, year to year, and also that we would be required, we would be monitored by IB, and we would also self-monitor and make sure that these programs are being implemented the way that they are supposed to be.
But in year two.
Uh-huh.
With all the teachers, how many, what was that number? What was the number of teachers that we would be training all at the same time?
Well, you would have 30 teachers per campus on the elementary schools. There would be 55 at the middle school, and also 170 at Garland High School.
So that's 255 that we would be trained. I'm just, I, I, I think I understand what we're trying to accomplish, but again, if it's not successfully implemented, I'm just very concerned about that.
Okay.
The next question, as I move away from the implementation plan. How will students and parents understand the change? Are, are we assuming it will be seamless?
Oh, no. No, ma'am. We would have to spend time educating our parents and our staff members. That has already begun a little bit, because we wanted them to have some background information on what was being looked at. But we would need to have parent meetings, and we would need to educate our parents, not just the parents of our academies, but any parent who has a student entering GIST that is interested in being a part of one of the academies or Garland High School. So we would do parent meetings, we would do community meetings, until we feel like we get the information out there and have answered the public's questions.
Because some of this is out already.
Yes.
And.
Sure.
We can't respond to it, because we don't know.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't, let me state, restate that. I don't know.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, um, it's just interesting how we promote this and how we put out the facts, you know, of what we're basically trying to do. So, thank you.
Dr. Morrison.
Board members, I was just going to mention, as far as the implementation goes, the four-year plan is IB's plan. It's a phased-in approach. We really don't have flexibility in that phased-in approach. Now, we may have flexibility in the schools that we choose, but not necessarily the approach is the same. We would be adding the coordinator at each of those levels, which would also help with that implementation, so I think that's an important component. But I think people, everybody needs to understand that IB does an assessment, and they are the ones that are assessing our implementation every year, providing feedback and allowing us to either move forward, or ultimately, they can deny us acceptance into the IB program. So all of the implementation that we would be doing, so we would have four- So all of the implementation that we would be doing, so we would have four years to bring the parents up to speed on everything that's going on. So really what you're talking about, think of it this way, somebody's out there right now with an eighteen-month-old child. That would be the first child in kindergarten that would be in this program, because it would be four years later before that eighteen-month-old would be five years old going through this program. So we're, this, this is a planning process. It's four years of complete planning. The training is taking place for the teachers, the principals, the schools. So it does, it becomes a part of your culture within the, within the school. And then you spend, every time you meet with the parents, you're talking about the transitioning and what it means to be an IB school, and the philosophies of IB and so forth, just like it's been very successful at Garland High School. We also feel like it would be successful at these academies as well.
Mr. Luna?
Do we think that the end result of all this, we would have what percentage more IB graduates?
Well, that would be the goal, is college and career readiness, and any way that we can help, help our students, and we strongly see that the intent of the IB, IB primary is to prepare students for the middle. The intent of the middle is to prepare them for the IB diploma program, and therefore looking forward to that number and that percentage of increase of diploma graduates, or just IB program, kids that qualify to be in the IB program, or to be at least partially in the IB program and to help them be college-ready. That's the whole goal. Yes, sir?
Mr. Ex.
I forgot to ask, I assume we'll still be having the certificate program, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you mentioned a hundred and seventy teachers at Garland High School for the training, is that correct?
That might be overstated just a little bit.
Yeah.
That's how many teachers we have at Garland High School. But you would want to train any teacher that was going to be a part of, any part of that IB curriculum. So if a kid comes in for IB art, that teacher is going to need middle-years training, which they currently don't have. If somebody comes in for IB film, or some of these, you know, more obscure courses, those, so one seventy is the total number of teachers at our school, but not all of them will be teaching the middle-years program. It would be, it would be substantially less than that.
Thank you.
Yes.
That, that makes a lot more sense. And I assume that many of the same teachers who currently teach pre-IB will be involved in the middle-years program at Garland High, is that correct?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay. So they'll kind of have a head start on at least the philosophy and-
Absolutely.
-all that sort of thing. Thank you.
Couple of questions?
Yes.
Why is the training taking place in year two, considering that then it would be year three, year four, and the teaching would not start till year five?
This is the, this came from the IB website, and this is their recommendation for that. Now, the teacher preparation, we'd like to give them more time to, we want teachers to be, I assume that IB wants teachers to be prepared much more on the front, because part of the implementation process is to make sure that they are putting things in place in order for the program to be successful. So this is exaggerated training, if you will, because it really takes time to implement this IB program in each of these categories. And so they want teachers to have plenty of time to not only get trained, but also to prepare and to meet together and to plan for that time when your school is named an IB school.
Dr. Davis, you and I had a theoretical conversation this afternoon.
Yes, sir.
And it was, the topic was that we are known throughout the Metroplex for the quality of education K through five in our academies.
Yes, sir.
I don't think there's any doubt about that.
No, sir, not at all.
Parents flock to this district for that type of education. So I'd like to hear from yourself and maybe the three principals at the elementary academies.
Sure.
Is this better? How can we, why is it better? Has research proven this is better? Now, I understand the success we've had at IB at Garland High School. I'm not talking about that.
Sure.
I'm talking about supplementing or eliminating the program that exists right now that seems to be working very, very well for a new program.
Okay, I'll speak to that in a, in a theoretical way, and then I will let them address the other part of that in their, from their perspective. For one thing, we do have a great program, agreed, no doubts about that, but we need to look from time to time and reevaluate and say, can we do better? And this is not a replacement of gifted and talented. It is not something that's going to replace something of our magnet schools at all. It is going to support it and build those students so that they become more college and career-ready, beginning in elementary school. And if that, you know, that, that's where it needs to begin, and those conversations need to begin, and how to work with each other and how to be a part of a global community. It is, of course, no secret that technology has really, you know, made our world a smaller place. We have so much more access to things and to people. And to put this into place and to have our students see things from a more global perspective and be challenged intellectually more so than just in their community, but in a worldwide perspective, would be beneficial to our students. And the IB data does show that. I know you said not, not looking at Garland High School necessarily, but that is the culminating experience that we want to head toward, and these programs lend themselves to that.
One of the things that I'm most excited about with this program is, from what I understand in talking with Ms. Nelson, Ms. Alexander about the program for the primary years, is basically we have our Garland ISD curriculum. That stays in place. We don't supplement that, we don't, we don't supplant that, of course. But then we take the IB thematic approach for global-mindedness and overlay that on top of our Garland ISD curriculum. And then all of a sudden, you're doing what you're doing, but you're taking it on a global mindset. The kids are thinking differently. That's where the inquiry comes in and all that, that Ms. Sutton talked about. I'm excited about it because, yes, we're a grade-level head in math in all of the academies. That makes us, you know, unique in a way, and our kids love it and our parents love it. But to have this global-mindedness come in right on top of what we're already doing, a lot of people know the theory's out there that the best way to teach elementary education is thematic teaching. I've seen that so many times, time and time again. If you look at dual-language training, it's thematic teaching. And so when you think about the themes that are now transdisciplinary, like Ms. Sutton said, you're bringing in that thematic teaching back into the primary schools. You're not, you're not taking away anything that we've done. We're not changing anything. We're only making it ten times better. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
And just to kind of piggyback on Mr. Rivera, our kids come in with so many gifts and so many talents. And if you, if we, if we look at our grade book and we look at the things that they're producing, our kids are topping out at ninety-five, a hundred percent. So that's an indicator that we're not challenging them to the utmost level. And with this model to bring in collaboration and teamwork and inquiry-based thinking, that's what we want to do for our gifted kids. I just feel like this will be a challenging opportunity for us to raise the rigor and provide some really enriching activities for our students.
Thank you.
And what I'd like to add to that is, just going back to the learner profiles that I referenced earlier, when we talk about that knowledge component, just as an example, we want to make sure that students see that their learning is connected, it is interdisciplinary. It's not, they don't just walk out of the math classroom and that's the end of math. We want them to see that math transcends everything that they do. It's incorporated into everything that they do. And one of the things that impressed me the most when we took our tour at the school in Carrollton Farmer's Branch was just the intense cohesive collective instruction and buy-in, if you will, to these ten attributes that, that contribute to what that IB learner is. And all of those components are components that we want to see in our learners. We want them to be balanced. We want them to be thought-provokers. We want them to delve into inquiry and question, be critical thinkers. And it's my opinion and excitement that incorporating or going into the PYP program would bring those things together, give us the tools with which to do that, and the support that would come through the training for the teachers and the administrators. I think that with enough education for the parents and talking about it through either community forums or school forums or whatnot, we could get the parents really excited about this. Overall, I, I see the IB student, even when they start out in the primary years, as the beginning of where we ultimately want our students to become, as productive, healthy, well-rounded thinkers.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Dr. Davis or any other panel? We thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll go to item three B. Receive information on Texas Performance Standards Project at GISD Academies for Excellence and Garland High School, Ms. Beard.
Good evening, Mr. Glick, members of the board, Dr. Morrison. My name is Cheryl Beard, and I am the Gifted and Talented Coordinator for the district. And this is Reese Smith. She is a facilitator in the Special Programs Department. She will be assisting me with this presentation tonight. Since June of two thousand thirteen, members of the Special Programs Department have met periodically with academy principals, the IB principal and coordinator, and an area director to participate in vision, mission, and goals planning. And the names, of course, are represented on your screen. They've already been introduced to you this evening. As a result of these meetings, the following mission statement was developed. The GISD Academies for Excellence provide a continuum of interdisciplinary learning experiences that challenge and engage students through innovation, inquiry, and intellectual risk-taking. Students will graduate as successful, contributing members of local, national, and international communities. As a district, we use the Texas State Plan for the Education of Gifted and Talented Students as our guide. The State Plan lists as its goal, students who participate in services designed for gifted and talented students will demonstrate skills in self-directed learning, thinking, research, and communication, and they will have produced products and performances of professional quality as part of their program services. Furthermore, the plan states that for a district to be in compliance with the law, it must provide a continuum of learning experiences that leads to the development of advanced-level products and/or performances, such as those provided through the Texas Performance Standards Project. The State Plan further recommends that participation in the Texas Performance Standards Project or the TPSP, or other experiences that result in the development of sophisticated products and/or performances, is available through a district's gifted and talented curricula. So the TPSP was a vehicle designed to help meet the state goal. But you still may be asking, what exactly is the Texas Performance Standards Project? Here is a brief video from the Texas Education Agency that may help explain.
How can we meet the needs of gifted and talented students in Texas? The Texas Performance Standards Project is a resource for providing differentiated instruction to gifted and talented students. The TPSP provides a coherent package of standards, curriculum, and assessments for use in GT programs from kindergarten through high school. Projects or tasks are based on the Texas essential knowledge and skills, and focus on the foundation content areas with interdisciplinary connections. The process includes guided instruction and opportunities for independent research. Students who participate in the TPSP are able to explore an area of interest or passion, and are stretched to discover what they are capable of doing academically through the creation of innovative products and performances. Teachers who participate in the TPSP have the opportunity to work with students in a meaningful, creative, and open-ended way. Districts who participate in the TPSP can improve GT services in areas including identification, professional development, curriculum and instruction, and program assessment. To some, the glass is half-empty. To others, it's half-full. The TPSP takes the lid off of student potential in the classroom and beyond. For more information, visit www.texaspsp.org.
Mr. Glick, board members, Dr. Morrison. The goal of the Texas Performance Standards Project is to provide resources for GT teachers and students that allow students to create professional-quality work in alignment with the Texas State Plan for the Education of Gifted and Talented Students. The Texas Performance Standard Project serves as a resource for providing differentiated instruction to gifted and talented students. It is aligned with the Texas and College and Career Readiness Standards. It provides grade-level guidelines for independent learning experiences and research projects that teachers can adapt and use with GT students, and it can also be used for providing enhanced academic opportunities for all students. The Texas Performance Standards Project tasks or units include a TEAC's alignment guide, adaptable activities, and other resources. They're designed to give GT teachers the flexibility to integrate the TPSP into existing programs and instruction. They are open-ended and can be extended and adapted. If a student displays a particular passion or interest in an area, he or she can continue that research. The tasks are embedded into some of the existing GISD gifted and talented curriculum, while some are implemented by, thematically by teachers per their preference, and some are integrated as activities for the GT students during the district-wide I-time. The benefits to students are numerous and include all facets of twenty-first-century learning skills. They provide rigorous, relevant, real-world, and appropriately challenging GT instruction. They improve communication and presentation skills, increase critical thinking and problem-solving skills, and develop inquiry, research, synthesis, and analysis skills. Students are able to explore areas of interest and passion and develop confidence. At this time, I'll invite Ms. Beard back to the podium.
Thank you. At this point, we would like for some of our principals to share with you what TPSP looks like on their campuses currently. Representing the elementary academies, Mr. Alex Rivera is going to, is the principal of Walnut Glen, Ms. Holly France from Austin Academy, and Mr. Atticus Weisner from Garland High School.
As you can see around the room, I've brought a couple of presentations that our students have done throughout the year with, for the TPSP. Very proud of them. I could not fit them all in here. It would encompass the whole room. We are very proud of them. Starting on the left-hand side over here, to my left, we have kindergarten students that are doing pointillism in art. They're doing the primary colors with black, I believe is, I can't remember the name. Mondrian, thank you. And so you can see, the students were able to talk to me about these presentations. Not only that, but my kinderteachers then had to, when we talk about transdisciplinary, they had to go and, and seek the advice from one of the most amazing art teachers, Ms. Kathleen Hodges, and, and elicit from her ideas, tools, resources, so that they could fulfill their TPSP projects. Toward the center there, you see third-grade tessellations in nature. I'd not know, I'd never heard of tessellations until the students started talking to me about them. It was, it was amazing. They were so excited to get up there and present. On the far right of the board, you see fifth-grade history quilts. And the students had to create a storyboard in a quilt, and then get up and present the quilt to their class members. One of the great things about the quilt project is my fifth-grade reading teacher told me that she learned so much about what to adapt in her classroom because of some of the things that she saw her kids doing and not doing. Some of them, their presentation skills were somewhat lacking, and so she would adjust her, her daily instruction to, to better fulfill those needs for the students. And then all around the bottom, you see the fifth-grade science, science boards, which are fossil fuels, biofuels, things like that, wind energy. Students really took pride in that. And we're going to provide these boards, the reason we have all of these is because we're going to provide a night where, where parents can come out and have a museum of TPSP projects, and we're also going to incorporate think-tank projects in that as well. On the floor there, I don't want to disregard fourth grade. Fourth grade has the living museum, so to speak. The bottom one on the left, if you have time to, to walk over there at some point tonight, that box was created by one of our students who, since last year, was diagnosed with leukemia. His name is J. John Hernandez. And we love J. John, we miss him a lot. He's, he's still doing well. But that's his box. The T P S P has done so much for our campus this year. It's not anything that we haven't done. There are teachers that have said, we've been doing things like this. However, we've given them a better framework this year, working in conjunction with all the other academy principals. So I can't say enough about it. I would invite any one of you to please come by our campus at any time and take a look at some of the other T P S P projects that we have to offer. Thank you.
Good evening again. I'd like to thank all of you, Mr. Glick, board members, Dr. Morrison, for giving us the opportunity to give feedback and input as to what is going on in our academies. At Austin Academy, we, before school started, we all met as a staff, and we all walked through the T P S P website, for those that may have not been familiar. Some teachers were more comfortable than others. So it was the requirement that the teachers examine the tasks that applied to their content areas and incorporate T P S P into their courses. So our enriched honors classes, which are compromised of all our G T students, were required to incorporate a task in the fall semester and the spring semester. As the tasks evolve in T P S P, from elementary to middle school, there's more of a technology component. So a lot of the T P S P projects are done in a technology-based manner. So I don't have those types of examples to provide to you, but it has been a valuable experience for our students. I think it provided just a better structure of accountability within our teachers and our classrooms to make sure our kids are going through those thinking processes. It's a scaffolding-in process as the T P S P tasks are done in phases, phase one, phase two, phase three. So it's getting all of our students to think at those levels independently, eventually create projects, work collaboratively, make real-world connections, and increase their levels of depth and complexity in their student thinking.
Thank you. I've got before me an extended essay, and the title is "Muon Coincidence Rate at Varying Lengths of Separation Between Cosmic Ray Counters." So that was a student-created extended essay, and if you were to read it, it would blow your mind. It's certainly blown mine as I've looked through it. But it's totally student-developed. It's a very, very independent base project where you have a mentor, you have a guide that facilitates the work, but the idea is for the teacher or the mentor to step back and let the kid wrestle through it and let him wrestle with it. This is a requirement in the IB program. The thing, the way I look at all of this, Board and Dr. Morrison, is the IB program, the middle-years program, and the primary-years program, that instructional program, that pedagogy, everything that it values, it satisfies so much of what you just saw. There's portfolio work, there's independent project work. So adherence to these state standards, I know, is alive and well at Garland High School. We did have a discussion early in the year. We talked to teachers, we had them turn in a list of the things they do that are satisfying these, and they're being done very regularly at Garland High School. The kids are doing very high-quality work. So thank you very much. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Beard or any of the presenters? Mr. Axe.
Is this new?
No, sir, it is not. It's not new.
Is it? Okay. We thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, it's now time to go to item four, which is our public forum. Again, please remember that you will be given three minutes. Those three minutes will begin after you give us your name, address, and if you have any children in the district. We have our third light working today, so there'll be a starting green light. There'll also be a yellow light indicating one minute left, and of course, the red light and the time is up. Again, please do not mention any names of individuals. So we have two cards. The first one is from Mr. Andre Smith.
Good evening, Mr. Board Member, President, Superintendent, and Trustees. For some time here, I've been in attendance, and I wanted to take the opportunity out to provide you with some questions. I am a resident of Garland, 1733 Lycester Street, a parent of a child in high school, and COO, person involved in a nonprofit organization. My first question is, how does the G I S D school board's decision-making process promote diversity, address inequality, oppression, bullying, and discrimination within this public entity, as well as the larger Garland community? The second question for you, Mr. Board President, are the public's concerns that address the fundamental issues of injustices with the decision-making process and G I S D's policies and procedures being valued? Mr. Board President, are resources being allocated equally and with transparency to the G I S D schoolchildren and independent minority vendors that provide essential services to select schools that are currently struggling to meet overall academic requirements by the feds and state of Texas? Mr. Board President, is it a consensus among the G I S D school board that blatant incompetency will continue to be rewarded? Mr. Board President, are you aware that test-based teaching for the last 15 years has not been working for the overall student population? Next question is, with the constant-changing demographics in Garland, the most important subject for all children enrolled in G I S D schools is to master reading. Mr. Board President, are you aware that more than 90% of inmates entering prison are illiterate? Mr. President, are you aware that there can be no significant learning until there is a significant student-teacher relationship? Is the G I S D board prepared to address the prison-complex mentality that exists with the North Garland High School administration? Is there an active effort by the district to aggressively recruit and retain, through the transparent bidding process, minority contractors? And my final question is, how does G I S D channel African-American and Latino-American male energy? Well, you certainly don't do it by sending these youth to the principal's office for suspension, expulsion, ACE placement, writing citations, and/or placing them in special education. That concludes my questioning. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, thank you very much. As you're aware, under the Opening Meetings Act, we are not allowed to respond to those questions, but we did hear them. Our second speaker is Ms. Candre Smith.
Candre.
Candre, sorry.
Good evening, Board President and Superintendent, and the board members. Once again, I'm here again. My name is Candre Smith, and I live at 1733 Lycester Street. I do have a student at Garland. And once again, I'm here, and I will continue to be here because I faced some challenges with going through the process with Garland as an independent contractor. I felt like what I had to speak about was not valued. I felt like that you all disregarded my request, and I say you all because you all are collectively, as a board. I was here to provide a service for the at-risk youth until your general counsel contacted me, and he knew it was an issue that went on that I'm not going to bring up until I'm able. I felt like I went through all the grievances, one, two, and three level threes, which, once again, I stated last meeting, that to request a hearing with the board. Well, your general counsel contacted me, and I went through the proper procedure with the grievance, and then he tells me I will not have a hearing because I didn't properly do the grievance again. So how many times do I have to file a grievance in order for you all to hear me? So since I can't have a hearing with you all, I would come to these meetings until I'm heard. They rectified the problem that we had. Well, the general counsel knew that I was having surgery December the 17th, because as per our conversation on the phone, he gets with my contract with you all, states that if I don't sign it by December 17th, it was null and void. And he knew that I was having surgery. And my concerns, the bullying, the disrespectfulness, the threats of risk management and calling the police, I don't have to tolerate that, and I don't appreciate that. I was here to provide a service. My services was very successful, as the superintendent himself followed up on. I'm not here to keep pointing fingers, but you all are doing a disservice for our children by this lingering and going on and going on and going on. And I'm standing again because I worked hard to build this organization, not for it to be torn down and not for it to be disregarded, and the respect that you all should have for community leaders, independent contractors, parents, and all. And I keep coming back because I'm crying out to you all because it really hurts me because I know we have not been driven from the same cloth, but I'm here to stand for my students that I constantly get calls about and constantly get calls from my parents that you are not respecting who I am as an individual. I respect each and every one of you all, and I ask that you respect my concerns that I have as well. And I was totally disrespected, my personal life, my brand, and everything, that I did nothing to honor you all, but when I want to confront the situation, I'm ignored, I'm put on the back burner, it's thrown under, like, I'm nothing. And it's hurtful to me.
Ms. Smith, our general counsel is in attendance this evening. I would ask if you could meet with him?
I keep getting disrespect from him. It's just, I'm getting the question, what did the superintendent do to you? What did this superintendent do to you? My thing is, it's not about the superintendent, it's not about that. It's about moving forward. That's what I'm trying to do. He knew that I was having surgery. And then you don't give me no ultimatum.
At this point, all I can suggest is that you meet with our general counsel. Okay? Thank you very much. We have no other cards, Ms. Minks? Okay. We'll go to item five, discussion items for the consent agenda. Item 5A, review budget transfers and amendments to the 2013-14 adopted budget. Ms. Weldon?
Good evening, Trustees, Dr. Morrison, Mr. Glick. You have before you the board transfers and amendments for the month of March. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? We thank you very much. We'll go to item 5B, new bids. Is that going to be you, Mr. Booker?
Yes, sir.
We missed you at the last meeting.
Unfortunately, I had to be away for, well, not unfortunately, but I was at the Tazbo Convention.
Although, your assistant did a great job, by the way.
Well, thank you. To Mr. Glick, to the board members present, to Dr. Morrison, we do have three contracts, new contracts before you for your consideration, six renewals, and one declaration of surplus. The first contract before you for your consideration is the purchase of asbestos and mold abatement services. The recommended contractor is E-Logic. We've had a successful relationship with the contractor in the past. The risk management department recommends approval for this year. The estimated value of that contract is $655,000. The second contract is the purchase of hazardous materials and consulting and related services. The district issued a request for qualification, received several qualification statements, and based on the overall fee and qualification statements, the district is recommending a one-year with four annually renewable contracts to Drew Consulting for $150,000 for the first year. The next contract before you for your consideration is the purchase of stage curtains, equipment supplies, and fireproofing treatment services. This contractor is being accessed through an interlocal, through Richardson Independent School District. The value of that contract is $150,000, primarily used by our fine arts department.
Are there any questions for Mr. Booker on new bids one through three? There being none, Mr. Booker, would you continue with renewal bids, please?
Yes, sir. The next contract for your consideration is the renewal of our peace officer security services. This is a contract utilized district-wide for after-school services, football games, volleyball games, different games where we need security officers. It is in its fourth and final renewal period. It's $200,000, and there's a list of those officers who we have access to that's been provided, for your attention. The second renewal contract before you is in its second and final renewal period for the purchase of fine arts apparel, merchandise, and accessories. There's a list of providers that our fine arts department has access to for purchasing a variety of different apparel. The value of that contract is $300,000. The next contract before your consideration and renewal is that for our school photography and graduation services. That contract is also in its final year. We're recommending an award to bow for for graduation services, commencement photography, flash photography, and the school photographers, Interstudio, Life Touch, Blunk Studios, Southern Images Photography, Portrait FX of North Texas, Strawbridge Studios, Goldbeck Company, and Hennington School Services. The next contract before you for your consideration is the review, or, excuse me, the purchase of paperback and miscellaneous books. There's a list of providers being recommended by our curriculum department. This is used primarily by our librarians. Estimated value of that contract is $200,000. The next contract before you for your consideration is the projector installation contract. We have a primary provider for that service, which is C3, secondary pro-computing, Summit Integration, and Alternate Epic Integration, utilized basically by our technology department. The value of that contract is $200,000, and it's in its final renewal period. The next contract for your consideration is the review of medical testing and evaluation services. That contract is valued at $90,000, primarily being used by risk management and our special education department. And the next contract, really, it's a declaration of surplus property. The transportation department is recommending that we declare 31 buses as surplus. We've already, the board has approved the purchase of 31 buses, and we are just getting in position so that when the new buses arrive, as soon as the existing buses that are in the fleet that are going to be replaced have finished the school year, we can dispose of them in accordance with the school board policy. Those are the contracts that we have before you for your consideration this evening.
Any questions for Mr. Booker on renewal bids C1 through 7? Only, yes. Dr. Castaneda.
Thank you. I was trying to remember, I think, I remember, if I remember correctly, last time we had buses, some of them generated somewhere between $5,000 and $10,000 in revenue from the sales? You don't have to answer factually to that. I think that's about right. And one of the questions we had at the time was, is that about the best we can do with the buses or not? Because some of them had really low, like, minimum opening bids for the sale. So just, just as you follow up.
It's a, it's a public bid sale, so we're taking the highest bid that's being submitted. We'll continue to look at the process for who is responding, but we are taking the highest bid for the buses.
Is it an open bid, or does it start with a minimum bid?
It's just open bidding. It's not a reverse auction.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Just Mr. Booker, if, oh, yes, Mr. Axe.
I noticed that when we were selling some other vehicles, we used an auction company. Are we doing this ourselves, or are we using an auction company for this also?
We have traditionally sold the buses ourselves. The transportation department would like to handle the title transfer. In the past, we've used an auctioneer for some of those services, and we had some title problems, and so we have used in-house services for this sale for that reason.
Just one comment, Mr. Booker. Just one comment, Mr. Booker. With the success of the children reading at Parsons, you might have to increase the, the allocation on the miscellaneous books in the future.
We'll bring that, we'll bring that increase in contract before you for your approval.
Thank you, sir. Okay. We'll go to item seven, which is, item, yeah, six. Item six, discussion items. A, consider revisions to local board policy, CW Local naming facilities on the first reading. Mr. Graham. Again, we've seen this item a couple of times, and we had some revisions, and now we're seeing it again with the latest of the revisions. And so we'll see, it is a first reading, and this will be on our agenda again.
It will. You're, you're correct, President Glick, board members, Dr. Morrison. Revisions to CW Local that were discussed, I believe, shortly before the Christmas break, we're just not getting back around to them, allows you a little more flexibility in, in, suggesting names for facilities. It also clearly defines what a school facility is to allow us some more freedom to talk about the naming of athletic facilities, maybe adjacent to a school building, a school room, like, such as an auditorium or a band hall within a school. Again, it just allows you as a board more freedom within your local policy to decide what you want to do in regards to naming facilities and building things of that nature.
Anybody have any comments? Dr. Castaneda.
I'd like to suggest to the board one more revision, if you'll consider it, under number four. It presently reads, "Other district facilities shall be named in a descriptive manner to identify their purpose and location." And so either want to hear from Justin that we have this flexibility or amend the language to read something, but may also include a personal or geographic name in accordance to one, two, and three above.
Well, what that allows you to do is it gives you the freedom to say, for instance, this building is the Harris Hill Administration Building. If, if it weren't named after Harris Hill, it would just be the Administration Building.
Yes. And my concern was, in the examples, it says, e.g., the G.I.S.D. Administration Building, which we know is called the Harris Hill Administration Building. Then it says, "The Professional Development Center," which I think is the Jill Schugert Development Center. And then it says, "William Stadium." So it wasn't, these examples did not give me complete confidence that we could add names to the descriptors. So can we change the shall? Can, can we do something with the language?
Or fix the, the examples, maybe?
Or fix the examples?
We can fix the examples or we can even remove the examples.
Yes.
I'm okay with fixing the examples because it provides a consistency.
Yes.
Whereas right now, they don't even accurately reflect what the buildings are called.
Everybody okay with that? Okay. So we'll see that on our next reading. That change, any other changes?
Yes, you will.
Okay.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you, sir. Let's go to item B, trustees' exchange of information. Who would like to start?
I'll be happy to go.
Yes.
First of all, I presented at the Texas Association of School Boards Winter Governance and Legal Seminar. The Garland Experience with Strategic Planning and Facilities Assessment, I got very good feedback from that, and in fact, had several superintendents ask for a copy of the PowerPoint to talk about our process. So I wanted to tell everyone that has been involved in strategic planning, as well as assessment of our facilities, that, that there are several districts that were, looked positively on, on what we're doing and are using Garland as an example. In addition to that, there were two other trustees, one from Alito and from South Lake Carroll, that spoke concerning the implementation of House Bill 5. Whenever they were gathering information to talk about district experiences and implementation of the new mandates, I sent to those trustees the information that we have in terms of our early planning process on that implementation. They used it as part of their presentation, and both of those trustees complimented Garland as being ahead of the curve even with regard to their districts. And they were the ones presenting with regard to the House Bill 5 implementation. So again, I want to tell the administrators and our educators that we're doing a great job with regard to that and wanted to be sure and pass that on to you.
Anybody else? Dr. Castaneda?
This past Saturday, I presented at the BEAM Conference, the Bilingual Education Association of the Metroplex, and we were, I was part of the panel along with the superintendents of Denton and Dallas, as well as one of the trustees from Denton. And the topic was, "The demographic future is now expanding improved educational opportunity for the children of promise." And in this case, "Children of Promise" was geared at English language learners. It was a good turnout. There were about 120 people. And also, at this presentation, Dr. Marzano was speaking, so it was really like a high impact kind of thing. And our Garland recruiters were also there at the table, always trying to attract top talent to our district. So I wanted to thank them and recognize them for doing that.
Anybody else? Ms. Drax? No. Anybody? Just one other item. This past weekend also, one of our trustees, Dr. Castaneda, had a great honor bestowed. The Dallas County Community College District picks the, I'm not sure if it's Professor of the Year or Teacher of the Year, for all of the community college districts. She was the nominee from her specific institution. And going into the award, she had some trepidation, and I said, "No, you'll win." She says, "No, I won't win." And in fact, she did win. And now she enters into the state competition. And I'm like, that takes place when?
We'll find out for May.
So we'll all be rooting for her. Okay, we'll go to item C. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
Go back to item B.
I thought, I thought you were going to mention this, but I'll just mention that Mr. Gwick and Ms. Griffin and I attended the Texas School Law Conference at the University of Texas Law School this last weekend. And it was very, very enlightening. We've got a lot of new ideas of things that we can, and ways we can approach what we're doing here. And it was very, very enlightening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to item C, which is review our calendar. One addition that's not on the air on March 26th is the Rowlett Annual Chamber Banquet. So that's March 26th, it's a Wednesday. The Texas Fellows Alumni Treat is in Houston on March 29th. Coming up, in early April, is the Strategic Planning Design Team Final Meeting. That's Mr. Nag, Ms. Griffin, and myself. That's on April 3rd. Then, April 5th, 6th, and 7th in New Orleans is the National School Board Conference. And of great importance later on that month, on April 11th, is the Best Golf Tournament. Any other items for the calendar? Okay. We'll go to item D, discuss future agenda items. Anyone want to add anything to the agenda? Nope. Okay, we'll go to item 7. These are action items. A, consider approval of voluntary benefits and third-party administrative services. Ms. Slough. Oh, Dr. Barajas.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Glick. Dr. Morrison, board members. Back in the fall of 2013, I approached our benefits department with the possibility of putting out to bid, RFP rather, TPA services, third-party administrative services for our 125 plan. Covered it with the superintendent, he gave us the go-ahead, and working certainly with Mr. Booker and his team, we were able to put together an RFQ that I believe, RFP rather, that went out in December, was it, Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Have to go back to look at what happened in December. We received the responses back in January. I believe there was a total of seven responses. Of that, we thought that five were qualified. TPA services for our Section 125 voluntary benefits is something that we hadn't done, at least in my tenure here, and I thought it was probably time for us to go out and see what it is that one of these large groups could provide to us. And of the five, we interviewed all five, by the way. The superintendent, myself, somebody from purchasing, and our benefits department were together and had everybody come in, and it was unanimous that we thought that TCG benefits could provide to us the services that we needed. With the district our size, I think that we're probably now at the point of providing to our employees, again, this is good for employees, the ability to have additional products that are offered in other districts. And the other big thing is the health savings account, which we did not have currently in the district. And I think all those things put together puts us in a situation where we can now start to provide these benefits to our employees, that certainly employees coming from other districts, like myself, where I left for a little bit, saw these kinds of issues. And I thought, well, you know, that's probably something we can do for Garland because it's time. And I think that with all the work that had been done up to that point, we're ready to go ahead and make a recommendation that the district award the contract for the Section 125 voluntary benefits to TCG benefits. As Mr. Booker perhaps, or Ms. Slough, and I believe we have representative from here, this is no cost to the district. These are all products that are paid for by the employees. They will also offer 403B services, 457 services, Cobra Administration, FICA ALT, and all these other kinds of issues, that it doesn't cost the district a penny for us to have these services. But Mr. Booker and I are both in agreement that no matter whether this is costing the district a penny or nothing, if the value of the contract, in other words, more than $75,000 in this case, we both view it as something that we are going to bring to the board. For instance, Dr. Pepper didn't cost the district a penny because they were actually giving us money, but still, we bring it in front of the board for approval because it's over the threshold that the board has set up for us. With that, I can either answer any questions you have regarding the timeline that I presented to you at the beginning. Certainly, Ms. Slough and Mr. Woolery from TCG can answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Dr. Barajas? Ms. Griffin?
You said additional services. Can you give me a few?
Well, additional benefits.
I mean benefits, I'm sorry.
Benefits, yes, ma'am. The HSA, the Health Savings Account is one. The other one that, that was talked about is the flexible spending account loaded onto a debit card upfront. Prior to this year, we didn't have that, but now we have a company who is willing to take on that liability, the risk of in September, everybody who is contributing to the flexible spending account, for instance, can have that front-loaded on their card so they can start using it immediately. Prior to this, we didn't have that. And those are some of the things that we are looking at to, again, offer more benefits to the employees. And I believe in your package, you also have some information regarding the different kinds of products that we are also going to be offering to employees that before this we did not have.
So do you feel that these additional benefits are cost-effective and that our employees would be able to take advantage of?
Well, whether they take advantage of them or not is entirely up to them, but in no instance is any employee going to be paying more for a product they currently have. For instance, if you currently have disability insurance, September 1, the disability plan that we have, we're going to carry forward, no employee's going to be paying more. That was one of the things that we looked at, to make sure that, in this case, we weren't going to punish employees by having them pay more into whether it's dental, vision, life. So again, employees are not paying more. And I think in the 457 plan, for instance, with the administration that we're going to have, that we're going to get received from TCG, for those that do participate in the 457 plan, they're actually going to be paying less in fees. So again, it's a good thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions, or Dr. Barajas? Dr. Castaneda?
Just a, can you clarify for me? You said the out-of-pocket cost will remain the same, not be any higher?
That's correct.
But will the amount of benefits, service providers, range of services be the same or better?
I'll have to turn that over to Ms. Cheryl Slough, who is over payroll and benefits, who can answer that. I did ask that question, if we, for instance, were moving to a different company, what was the rationale for us to move from company A to company B? Not that I thought it would come up during this conversation, but I was just curious myself, you know, why, why are we making a move from a group that we currently use, whether it be dental or vision, and moving it to somewhere else for the same, same money? And the answer was, because of the added benefits, and there's other kinds of issues which, again, Ms. Slough can address better than I can.
Great.
Good evening. When we looked at the benefit plans, we made sure that everyone was going to get at least as good a benefit as they were getting, if not better. Some of the choices we had, while the premiums were lower, the benefits were not as good as what people were used to. So we were, we made the decision that it was better to keep the more enhanced, better benefit plan than just to cut the premiums and they get less benefit out of those plans.
Great. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this is an action item. The chair then will entertain a motion on approval of the voluntary benefits and third-party administrator.
Move to, move to approve the voluntary benefits and third-party administrator as forwarded in our package?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, please show your affirmation, raising your hand. That item passes 7-0. Thank you both. Good, item 7B, consider, discuss, and approve nominations and appointments to the facilities Subcommittee of the Board of Trustees. We talked about this item on our last meeting. We know that if we're going to be calling for bond election the next date, that we must do it by is August 18th. Not to allow this issue just to not be talked about, not be discussed, because I believe we all have a lot of questions. So I think the easiest way to do it is divide it up in subgroups of three. And I think we can do two of those. So, does anybody have any, of the breakdown of security and safety, building systems, technology, CTE, fine arts, athletics, anybody, any committee that you would like to be on Subcommittee? That you think, okay, Mr. Luna, security.
Facility and security.
Ms. Griffin?
Facility and security.
Security and safety?
Well, security and safety. Well, whatever that is.
I'll put you on that one.
I'd like to be on athletics and CTE.
Okay.
Same here, fine arts, athletics, CTE.
Okay.
I'll serve wherever you want. That's good. She can't be security.
So no one has any interest in building systems at this point, apparently? Is there anybody?
You do.
You don't want me on that? Well, I guess not. I guess we're together on building systems. Okay? Got it? Okay. We're now pleased to go into closed executive session on item 8, under 2, under 551001, 551074, consider approval of personnel matters, and 551071, private consultation with the It's now 8:01 PM. We've returned from closed executive session. I hereby certify that the only matters discussed were those privileged to us under Section 551074, 551071. Is there a motion?
Move to approve one administrative appointment. Sam McElroy, current position Campus Athletic Coordinator, Head Football Coach at Naaman Forest, is recommended as Assistant Athletic Director.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, please show your affirmation, raising your hand. Item passes 7-0. Is there a motion for adjournment? We are adjourned.